I want to welcome everyone to the council meeting of April 9, 2018. Please call the board.
Rich Berta. Kate Conroy.
Here, sorry.
Ed Hattenbach.
Here.
Alida Kaine.
Here.
Tom Muthin.
Here.
Ray Warren.
Here.
Natalie Wolfe.
Here.
Scott Lammert.
Here.
Kevin Frank.
Here.
Keith Wallace.
Here.
And if everyone could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Those minutes were circulated in the package to all council members. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to those? Seeing none, we consider the minutes approved. Next item is the finance report for February 2018.
Thank you, Mayor. In the council packet, we included the UAN report, but I also provided a memo that summarizes the activity for the month of February from the general fund. The earnings tax collections for the month of February totaled $104,000. This is about, this is up about 6% compared to February 2017's collection of $98,000. Our estimate for the year is $2,750,000, so we certainly have a long way yet to go for the year. In regards to the local government fund, which are funds that come from the state, we received about $6,000 in local government funds in the month of February. Our total revenue for the month of February was $209,000, and that puts our total revenue year-to-date at $411,000, so about 8.6% of our revenues have been collected as of the end of February. On the expense side, the village had expenses in the month of February of $365,000, and our total expenses year-to-date reflect about $845,000, so we've spent about 16% of the budget. The budget for 2018 is $5.1 million. And at the end of February, that leaves us with an unencumbered general fund balance of $4.4 million. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the man? If not, we'll move on to, the next item on the agenda is, we have a number of citizens that have registered to speak for council this evening. And for anyone that I was not able to talk to ahead of time, what we are working is that I will call you forward if you could just state your name and address at the podium, and then you have three minutes to say whatever you'd like. I will then ask council members if they have any questions. If there are no questions, then you can just return to your seat. So again, thank you for your interest in registering, say that ahead of time. And first of all, I ask Rabbi Wise.
Thank you, counsel. I live at 3160 Fairhaven Lane, as does my wife, Kathy, who could not be here. I am strongly positioned as a resident of Amberly Village and as a rabbi of a congregation here in Amberly Village that it is absolutely essential that our village have a strong, unequivocal ordinance, that every person living in the village, or who works in the village, or who's visiting the village is absolutely equal under the law, and that no discrimination of any kind would be tolerated. And I also am strongly positioned that this ordinance needs to be not just window dressing or something quote-unquote "nice," but it has to have substance to it, if you will, teeth to it. Now, it's very possible it won't even ever have to be used. That would be really ideal. But as a matter of defining for anyone and everyone, those of us who live here and work here, or those who visit, or those who just know about Amberly Village, that this is who we are existentially, this is who we are. We live in America, a democracy, and it's not incidental that there is a significant separation of quote-unquote "church and state." Being a Jew, I'm very sensitive concern about the lack of this kind of separation in the state of Israel, where there is undue influence by religious groups affecting the rights and privileges and lives of many. And that is something I don't want anywhere in this country of ours, and certainly not in Amberly Village. You know, there are folks, let's take the proverbial baking a cake for a same-gender wedding, and someone claiming that violates my rights. I think that's going before the Supreme Court. The fact is, in the public arena, in the public square of a democracy, that type of argument that my religious views have to be protected, and I'm opposed to such a wedding, and therefore I won't serve equally a customer into my public business. When you open a retail business, you have to serve everyone. There are people in this country today whose religious beliefs are that interracial marriages are a sin. Or even in the Jewish context, what about an interfaith marriage? In the public arena in the United States of America, which would include businesses, just to use that one example, there is no room for the entry of personal religious beliefs that would result in discriminating. And the fact is, thankfully in America, we all have the rights, and this was part of the design as well, that give us religious freedom. I am free to have my own beliefs inside my heart and soul, in my home, and in my synagogue. And those are protected and need to be protected strongly. So it's not an either-or paradigm. There's a reason why this country was founded the way it was in regard to religion being separate from the democratic functioning and governance of this country. And I will end where I began. I want to live in a village, I want to be a rabbi in a village that represents this democratic value unequivocally, clearly, and that we can be known as such a village as compared to being known as not such a village. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the rabbi? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, Amy Bogard.
Hello. I'm Amy Bogard, 8420 Spring Valley Drive. Last year at this time, I stood here in front of council to speak in support of a resolution containing language espousing the benefits of diversity in our community. I spoke in the hope of forging a path forward through law to make our village safe for all of its citizens eventually, regardless of age, race, color, religion, ethnicity, national origin, ancestry, disability, marital status, family status, military status, sex, gender identity or expression, or sexual orientation. And that was the language that was expressed on that night. I shared my own personal history of growing up just down the hill in a very different community, one tainted with bigotry, ignorance, and a certain level of misguided religious certitude with regard to my non-traditional family of origin. I left that particular village council meeting filled with hope for times ahead in Amberly Village. I've provided council with copies tonight of that speech, once again, as a reminder of the full backstory. For a year is a long time. A year is in fact time enough for this council to perform a complete about-face on this issue. In April of last year, council voted unanimously to the review and updating of laws, policies, and procedures ensuring protection of all village citizens. Even since then, council unanimously supported nondiscrimination law and language on the docket at the state level in the state of Ohio. And yet, in the meantime, it would seem, council has fallen prey to a rather vocal, local conservative religious minority who would rather have their own views and beliefs placed ahead of those of the broader community. The words I wrote and eventually spoke to council this time last year, followed by the words and views of many of my fellow citizens before and since, clearly do not hold as much gravitas and power as those words brought to the table by a small few influential religious leaders in our community. As I pondered what to bring to this meeting tonight in the way of something to say, I took a long walk. I pondered the various paths that make up this little village of ours. Many paths to walk along, but all part of one village, a bit like religion really, many paths to a great and mysterious divinity. I opted to look to three religious paths and the good books from which they draw wisdom for a small sampling of words, in the hope that perhaps they might make a bit more of a difference, that they might speak more loudly than my own words did last year. From Corinthians, "There are different kinds of gifts but the same spirit; there are different kinds of service but the same Lord; there are different kinds of working, but the same God works, all of them in all men." From Psalms, "Behold how good and how pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity." And finally, from the Quran, "O you who have believed, be persistently standing firm for Allah, witnesses injustice, and do not let the hatred of a people prevent you from being just; be just, that is nearer to righteousness." Not being a religious academic, I'll leave it there, but I offer this as a suggestion that perhaps council members might consult their own versions of the good book, wherever that might take them, and decide to return to the drawing board on this issue. There are many potential paths to a lawful united eventuality which protects all citizens of Amberly Village. Let us not allow a few misguided apples to ruin our path forward toward inclusion and protection of all God's people in Amberly Village. I have faith that there is a way to draft an ordinance which will protect our most vulnerable citizens under the word of law, and that this council is capable of drafting such a measure, thus allowing our neighbors to join their fellow citizens whose rights and religious beliefs are already protected. Addressing council this time last year, I spoke of the power of words in setting the tone of our community. Well, it's time to take those words to task. It's time to put into law a proper ordinance protecting the rights of every citizen of Amberly Village. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thanks. Next, Rabbi Karan.
I'm Rabbi Sigma Fay Karan. I live at 2580 Twigwood Lane, and I'm the senior rabbi of Rockdale Temple. And as a holy community in this, in this village, Rockdale Temple has already a policy of nondiscrimination among our members and our employees, and we have policy that our board has passed that we are an open and safe place to everyone regardless of any differences, whether it be gender, race, religion, well, obviously, we're Jews, but our employees are not all Jews. And we also are committed to protecting the rights of those who identify with different gender identities as well as sexual orientation. And it is as the leader of that community and also as a resident that I encourage you to pass an ordinance that protects all of those classes that were mentioned, and not a watered-down version of the ordinance, that it's important to me not only as a resident who feels that my neighbors should be safe, but also as a religious leader who feels that our employees and our members should be safe in this community, but also as a religious human being who knows that each one of us are created in God's image, and that each one of us should be treated with a kind of respect and kindness that we ask of ourselves and of each other. And so I encourage you to pass a strong ordinance that would protect all these classes. It has been done already in 19 different municipalities around the state without any issue, and in those, I believe that there is an opportunity to have certain exemptions for certain religious classes, it wouldn't be my congregation, but in order to make the ordinance a strong and protective one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much. Next, Jennifer Branch.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Branch. I live at 8455 Crestdale Court with my husband and family. I've come to several committee meetings. I followed the various versions of the ordinance. I commend the council for going down this path and deciding a year ago that it was time for Amberly to come forward and have a civil rights ordinance that will protect LGBT members of your community. I practice civil rights litigation. Our firm represented James Obergefell and Jim Arthur in the marriage equality case. I've been working on these cases for the last 20 years of my 30-year career here in Cincinnati, and I have no recommendation for you. I think you're in a tough position because this ordinance is weak, but it's something. It could be so much stronger. And whether you want to make the decision tonight to go back to the drawing board and come up with a stronger ordinance that really does offer protection for those who work here, those who live here, those who visit here, I think that is a tough decision for you to make, but I want to give you a little perspective. The Human Rights Campaign is a national organization that rates corporations and municipalities on how close they come to providing LGBT equality for people either in their employment or in their jurisdiction. And the way I read the ordinance that's pending currently, there would be a statement from the council that we here in Amberly protect LGBT rights, and no one should be discriminated against because of that status. That earns you five points out of 100 on the Human Rights Campaign scale. In addition, I read your ordinance is allowing a prohibition, I shouldn't say allowing, but prohibiting discrimination in housing on the basis of LGBT. Prohibiting discrimination for transgender people in housing earns you five points, and you get another five points for LGB citizens. So that gives you 10 points on the scale. In addition, you are proposing to start a Human Rights Commission. The commission has no enforcement power. The commission has no mandate from this council, but it's a start. That earns you another five points. Total, this ordinance gives, would get a score of 20 out of 100. So is that something you want to start with? As I said in one of the committee meetings I attended, it's a baby step. Or do you want to start higher up the scale? City of Cincinnati is 100%. City of Columbus is 100%. City of Akron is 100%. I don't expect Amberly to be at 100% rating with your Human Rights Ordinance, but you might want to start a little bit higher. And if you choose not to, and to pass this ordinance, I would ask that you also pass a separate directive to your Human Relations Commission that you decide to put together and give them as a first task to strengthen the ordinance and provide protection for everybody in the village. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Next, Kevin and Jane Murphy.
Actually, I'll start myself and then she'll follow. I agree with everything that's been said, and I think I laud the council on their attempt. I think you're biting off a big chunk. And I think that, as a former speaker said, there's going to be more that needs to be done to make it work. And I was thinking about what the challenge will be and what will get in the way of making progress on this. And being a pragmatist and looking down the road at the big picture, I started with the end of the first whereas, which is to provide for an inclusive community for all residents, businesses, and visitors. Sounds great. And then I decided, I wonder what exclusive, inclusive really means? So I looked up all this stuff, being a researcher at heart, on the, this is the Cambridge English Dictionary for inclusive. A group or organization that tries to include many different types of people and treat them all fairly and equally. That sounds very good also. The problem with that is we are not a group of people. We are individuals with our own lives and our own backgrounds. And then I said, well, what is going to be the real linchpin here that gets us from here to there? And I think the word for me is tolerance. I think tolerance will be required. And so I looked up tolerance. A willingness to accept behavior and beliefs that are different from your own, although you might not agree with or approve of them. Important words are "agree with" or "approve of them," because that's what's going to slow the process down, obviously. Not everybody has the same point of view. And so I went from agree to improve, and they are both defined as an opinion. Have some opinion and agree, and have positive opinion of someone and approve. And then I went from opinion to belief, which is a thought or belief about something or someone, and then from belief to feeling, the feeling of being certain that something exists or is true. And feeling is defined as an emotional state or reaction. So we're way down here, and right now, we're way up here, pretty much in the abstract. So what I am hoping is that we kind of get down to specifics, things that we can work on, hopefully as a group of people differ and are tolerant, and they can hold, you can hold your own belief, your own opinion, and your own feelings, but it would certainly be positive for us all in this village to have an agreement that we're all going to treat each other as human beings.
Thank you.
My name is Jane Murphy. I live at 2326 Section Road. And after hearing what some others have said, oh, I have a completely different opinion. But first, I want to thank you for the work that you have done on this Human Rights Ordinance. We've been researching this, and I realize what a difficult subject it is, and appreciate everything that you've done. And so I was going to say, it's a great place to start, and I hope that you'll pass this, but after hearing Jennifer and scoring us, I realize there's a lot more that we can do. And the commission that we're talking about creating, I think that's such a wonderful idea, but it says that the purpose of the commission is not to penalize, but to encourage and endeavor to bring understanding and respect among all persons. And I guess that's the part I would have to say, that is just too watered down for me. I believe history has shown how ineffective that approach has been. I believe there needs to be consequences for non-compliance. Saying be nice to each other doesn't bring about change. If we really want to make all people feel welcome and free from discrimination, I think we need to face our fears, embrace diversity, and commit to consequences for offenses. Tolerance doesn't come about just because we create a commission. Our message must be, we won't tolerate discrimination, and we must be clear to what lengths we are willing to go to uphold these rights for all Amberly residents. I have to end with something that I feel so positive about. I feel that I have such great faith in this village and really our world because of our young people. Social media, for all of its negatives, has exposed our young people to all kinds of people and beliefs. I see more acceptance and tolerance and less judgment from our youth. Kinder, more tolerant times are coming. In the meantime, let's help foster acceptance, support, and protection for all people. We adults must be good role models for our youth. Let's encourage inclusion, acceptance, and consequences for those who don't comply. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? We'll now move on to Keith Luckett and Christopher Beerman.
Counsel, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Dr. Keith Luckett. This is my husband, Chris Beerman. We live at 6990 Elbrook Avenue. I've never addressed council before, so I have to introduce myself a bit. I am a professor of medicine at UC Health. I am an 11-year Amberly resident, and I'm a member of the LGBT community. So thank you for your work on this Human Rights Ordinance. I think that what we have, as many people have said, is a great start. However, as it's been said already, just codifying equality in our village is not enough. We have to have some sort of enforcement policy and some sort of repercussions for not complying with this ordinance. Right now, the Human Rights Commission that's, that is created by this ordinance has none of this ability. So why is this important? Well, for me, nearly all of the other protected classes in this ordinance are protected federally. LGBT persons are not necessarily protected federally for, from all of the problems that we face. So objection to LGBT equality is nearly universally espoused in religious reasons. You know, I've spoken to a lot of people who have objections to these sorts of ordinances, to these equal rights, and they're hard-pressed to tell me a reason that is nonreligious. Thankfully, as Dr. Wise, as Rabbi Wise said, in our country, we have a separation of church and state, and we have to walk the delicate line of freedom of religion and freedom from religion. Just because you have freedom of religion doesn't give you the right to impinge upon my freedom from religion. At the end of the day, I see this as coming down to an issue of morality when certain groups and people's moralities are different than others. I think that we can live in this village as a combined community, all tolerant of each other, all helping one another, and all making it a more diverse and inclusive community. At the end of the day, it comes down to respect. Respect for our neighbors, respect for our friends, respect for the council, respect for our religious community, respect for everyone in the village. Rabbi Wise said another thing today, talking about this proverbial wedding cake. The proverbial wedding cake. You know what? If I ask you to bake a wedding cake for myself, and you don't believe in gay marriage, you're just baking a cake for two dudes having a party. You know, if you don't believe in it, there's no meaning to it. I'm not going to ask you to bake my wedding cake, though. But where do we stop? What if you own a small business that repairs televisions? Are you going to refuse to repair my television because I might watch Will and Grace or some other LGBT-friendly television show? Would you refuse to cut my grass because I might have a big gay barbecue? We really have to draw a line somewhere, and it's really hard to make these decisions. It's really, really difficult. So I see patients every day. So I see patients every day in my practice who have differences in morality than I do. These patients may have HIV, may have hepatitis C, and use intravenous drugs. They share needles knowingly, knowingly, that they might transmit these diseases to other folks. Does that mean that I abandon them? Does that mean that I judge them? Does that mean that I don't care for them? No, because that would be wrong. We need to treat everyone equally. So I think this ordinance is a great start. I think that it needs more, whatever your decision might be tonight, whether it be to pass this ordinance or to reject it and go back to the drawing board. If you pass it, I would be happy to work further with you on a council to actually give some repercussions to this. If you decide to go back to the drawing board, I would still be happy to work with you on making a stronger ordinance. So, once again, thank you all for your work, and I hope that, uh, we meet somewhere in a more positive place next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Luckett. Any questions? Uh, next, Shelley Triant DeFalu.
Triant Happy, thank you.
Sorry.
It's okay. It's a hard one.
Um, and I'll be brief. I want to thank you for allowing me to stand here and speak. I live at 7920 Rowley Knoll Drive with my husband Jerry, and, um, we've been here for five months. We moved here from Kentucky. And, and one of the reasons that we like Amberly is because of its diversity. If one knows, I can, I can look down the street and I can see our, our, our relationship, there are many different kinds of people on my street at this point in time. And both Jerry and I like that. Their religious beliefs, sexual orientation, and people who are not just like me. And I'm passionate about this. If, uh, if there's somebody that I could help or is having trouble, um, in that realm, um, I would fight for it. We understand now that there may be some questions in the community that puts these freedoms at risk, and that's pretty scary for me. I, I don't like it, and I don't want it to happen. Um, this belief and the ordinance, it has to be passed, and it has to be passed in such a way with its writing that it includes all things that all of us feel are needed, not something that's watered down. Has to be inclusive. And in this way, hopefully the council has a forum. You'll have a forum to address any of the issues that come up and allow people's values to be heard and to create solutions that honor all of us, each and every one of us here, not just a few, who have chosen to live here in Amberly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. Uh, and Monica Leir.
Thank you very much, Counsel. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Monica Leir, and I live at 3230 Long Meadow Lane. I am the Democratic Ward Chair for Amberly Village for the past few years, and I've worked unofficially in such a capacity for the last four. My wife, Cynthia Barr, and I have lived at 3230 Long Meadow Lane for eight years. We've been married for one. We have enjoyed living here, but these past few months has put us into a quandary. We are dismayed by the division aroused by the introduction of the Human Rights Ordinance. We were present when the original resolution was passed by this council, and unfortunately, we were present when discussion on passing this ordinance devolved into a shouting match. I was surprised and frankly hurt by the lack of support shown by the reaction of several council members and some of the members of the Orthodox Jewish community. Though my wife and I are members of the LGBT community, we also reside in this community, and we support Amberly with our tax dollars. I contribute my time as ward chair to register and educate the voters here. We love this community. We love our neighbors and friends. We've made in a short time here. We care about this community. We are invested in this community. We want to see it thrive. And we only wish to feel safe here and be represented by the passage of an ordinance, a fully armed ordinance, that would fully protect LGBTQ individuals living and working here in Amberly Village. Not passing this ordinance would show us a lack of respect, a lack of respect to one group of human beings. Does this sound familiar? Fifty years ago, Martin Luther King said he dreamed of a day when his little girls could walk hand in hand with white children. Well, I dream of a day when it won't matter to anyone anymore who we are, whether we're lesbian, whether we're gay, whether we're queer, whether we're Mexican, whether we're Jewish, only that we're human beings, neighbors, and good friends. Please pass an effective ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Well, thanks, everyone, uh, for the comments. We'll now move on to committee reports and the health, education, and welfare. Oh, before we do that, I did, I did receive two emails, uh, from people who were not able to attend this evening, but asked that I, uh, read kind of their statements. So I would like to read those at this point. Uh, first, my name is Phil Weintraub. I live at 3140 White Tree Circle and have been an Amberly resident for 19 years. I am writing in regard to Ordinance 2018-4, Ordinance to Combat Discrimination and For the Guarantee of Equality and Inclusion. First, let me state that I greatly enjoy living in our village, and I've always thought of us as an accepting, open, multicultural, and progressive community. Sadly, the past few months have made me rethink my perceptions as well as my sense of belonging here. I was present in these chambers when the council unanimously approved a resolution calling on the state to include equal rights and protections for Ohio's LGBT citizens. However, however, we're all aware of what has transpired since in Amberly with our own similar ordinance. And although we've all danced very politely around the underlying issue here, it does appear some members of council may have been intimidated by a minority of residents with their threat of lawsuits. On one hand, I do appreciate the argument that the village doesn't have the financial means or adequate personnel to enforce potential infringements of the proposed ordinance. On the surface, that seems reasonable, but it reinforces something deeper, the very un-American idea of justice being denied because it's just not affordable or convenient. As a member of another less vocal and less visible community minority, the LGBT community, I interpret this revised, watered-down ordinance as an act of timidity. Given the choice between supporting all residents or appeasing one religious minority, council has decided to take the easy way out. Who needs the LGBT community when the Orthodox Jewish community has more funding and the audacity to sue the village? How invested can this religious group be in the life of our village when they would exclude their fellow human beings from the same protections they enjoy? As to the point of protections under the law, if anyone should undertake discrimination, exclusion, and bigotry, it's the Jewish people. So as a Jew myself, I find it remarkable that the Orthodox among us don't see the irony of their own prejudices. I had hoped that you, my fellow Amberly residents and members of council, would be on the right side of history on this issue. There is still time to make the right choice. But by your recent actions, voting for a statewide initiative while gutting our own ordinance, it seems to be easier to support statewide efforts while sweeping local ones under the rug. The idea of a local human rights, or human relations council is a flimsy and insignificant strap meant to assuage the LGBT community. Let me assure you, it doesn't. Someday, if and when you're faced with a child or grandchild who encourages discrimination of any kind because of their gender identity in any municipality, job, or organization, I hope you'll look back and realize how you skirted the issue when you could have advanced the cause of equality. Is that the type of legacy you wish to leave? And then, um...
Wow, that was awkward.
Yeah. Um, I received these, these emails asking if they'd be ready.
But I did not know that reading was an option for people with incredible social disabilities. I thought that was...
Sure. Uh, and then, then Bruce Lazarus sent one. I urge you to pass Ordinance 2018-4. This ordinance falls short of the protections that last year the entire council voted in support of, calling upon the state of Ohio to pass anti-discrimination laws to include protections for the LGBTQ LGBT community. Even with its shortcomings, it is a positive step in the right direction. Amberly claims itself to be a welcoming and nondiscriminatory community, and this legislation would back up that claim. Living in a multicultural, pluralistic society requires we have mutual respect and tolerance. Tolerance doesn't mean you have to like someone or agree with them, but it does require that you treat all people fairly. Our democracy is based on the idea that all people are created equal and deserve equal treat. This legislation helps reinforce that idea. Equal access to housing, employment, and freedom from intimidation are the cornerstones of America. We need to have laws that back up those cornerstones. This ordinance is a great start. Okay, Rabbi Wolfsen, if you'd like to...
Thank you for the, uh, last-minute inclusion. Uh, yeah, I did not know about this until, uh, just a few hours ago, so thank you for the, uh, last-minute notice, but, uh, and for giving me the chance to speak. Uh, my mind's racing right now from hearing all of this. Uh, a lot of these views are...
Make sure you're speaking.
Sure. A lot of these are views that I respect deeply. Uh, a lot of people in this room I get along with in many ways, that I work together with i- in many ways. Um, but I feel particularly after reading that first letter and hearing the applause, that was ultimately a tremendous slander, uh, to the Orthodox community. Uh, now I don't feel very safe. Some of you might be thinking, well, now he knows how it feels. Uh, I get where you're coming from, and I really do respect the values that this ordinance is putting forth. I think we all do. I think the Orthodox community largely does as well. We may have a few crazies here and there, sure, and who doesn't? But, uh, the point I wanted to make was that in terms of those that are opposed to this, uh, ordinance being given teeth or anything more broadly, uh, I really want everyone in this room to understand, especially when we're talking about having a community that is tolerant, uh, in, in every way, is that, uh, those that would oppose, uh, are not coming from a bigoted standpoint, certainly not explicitly so. Uh, where they're coming from is concern about unintended consequences. And, uh, we have experienced the brunt of unintended consequences previously. Um, we had a, a meeting about this, uh, in the past. I don't remember how long, how long ago. Um, but yes, a, a member of Cincinnati Hebrew Day School talked about, uh, an incident that you might think is apples and oranges, but we really don't think so, is that some of, that the school was sued having fired a teacher, um, because the teacher frankly was underperforming. And later on, she sued them for, uh, age discrimination. Never mind the fact that the teacher they hired to replace her was in fact older than her. Uh, but then the school, when faced with a, with a lawsuit, had to make the inevitable decision of, uh, just settling because it's not worth the headache, uh, to try to fight it. Um, those are the kind of things that we do experience, and, uh, I would, you know, to, to talk about, uh, to the doctor, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, Dr. Luckett. I, I'm somebody who would happily repair a television. I'd mow your lawn. I'd, I'd even bake your cake. But, uh, but at the same ti- I, I think this room, especially when I, when I hear the things that were said, uh, in, in a very slanderous way towards the Orthodox Jewish community, I think it's important to make that known. And to know that so much of, uh, the desire to limit the, uh, how far-reaching this ordinance is, is not coming from any desire to discriminate, and I would stand with you against those that would wish to discriminate against you. Uh, it's coming from concern about the blunt tool of the law, uh, being applied in a way that would cause more harm, uh, than, than it's purported to, uh, to actually, uh, protect people. Uh, that's, that's where largely our concerns are coming from, uh, in conversations with some of you personally, Mrs. Wolf notably. I know I, uh, I mentioned these things, and, uh, I hope we see eye to eye that a lot of the disagreement here is about a lot less than I think it's being portrayed, uh, this evening. Um, to those that might say, oh, come on, it, it would never go that far. Uh, we would never, uh, you know, go, go on a witch hunt, so to speak, for finding discrimination when it's not there. Um, I have to say, the remarks shared this evening don't make me feel all that comfortable about such an assertion. Uh, I think there is a desire to oversimplify the issue in a way that makes me deeply concerned that there will be unintended consequences, and, uh, I appreciate the efforts that you are putting forth in making this ordinance, uh, express the values that so many of us share, myself included, uh, and at the same time, uh, limiting the harm that it could subsequently cause if it was too, uh, if it was overreaching too much. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to committee reports, and we only have one committee report. It's the health, education, and welfare. There's been two readings of the ordinance. There has not been any motion made with respect to the ordinance. So upon the third reading, it is, it is customary that there would be a motion made for the third reading.
Is that the report?
Well, the report is the third, this is the third reading of, uh... This is the third reading of ordinance number 2018-4, an ordinance to combat discrimination and guarantee of equality and, and inclusion. Um, I'll read the statement of intent. Well, um, I'll read the last whereas. Whereas, it is the goal of the village and the purpose of this ordinance to create a vehicle by which the village and its residents can educate and create opportunities to support and protect the civil liberties and freedoms of every person who calls the village home. Statement of intent. It is the intent of Amberly Vill- of Amberly Village to protect and safeguard the right and opportunity of all persons to be free from all forms of discrimination, including discrimination based on one's membership in a protected class such as age, race, color, religion, ethnicity, national origin, ancestry, disability, marital status, family status, military status, sex, gender, identity, or expression, or sexual orientation. It is important to ensure equal access to employment, housing, public accommodations, and education in the village. Reading from the ordinance. The denial of these rights to persons in a protected class is contrary to principles of freedom and equality of opportunity and is destructive to a free and democratic society. That is the intent of the ordinance. The ordinance in Section 102.03 creates Human Rights Commission, comprised of five members appointed by, one by the village manager, one by the mayor, and three appointed by majority vote of village council. And all members of the commission shall be residents of the village and serve, um, staggered terms. The Human Rights Commission is, uh, serves an educational purpose primarily. They will create their own powers and duties. Um, Section 102.08, the village shall give consideration to all contractors who have a stated inclusive policy against discrimination that is substantially similar to the village's policy as set forth in this chapter. And this ordinance, uh, includes Section 135.09, Housing Discrimination. And this ordinance includes section 135.09, Housing Discrimination Prohibited. No person shall attempt to or willfully enter, intimidate, or interfere with any of the following. Any person from renting, purchasing, selling, financing, or occupying any housing accommodations, from contracting or negotiating for any housing accommodations, or from applying for or participating in any service, organization, or facility related to business, selling, renting, housing accommodations because of race, color, religion, sex, sexual orientation, gender identification or expression, national origin, ancestry, familial status, military status, or disability." And this provision creates a misdemeanor of the first degree, a two-bi-er. And 135.092, Ethnic Intimidation. The ordinance bans ethnic intimidation and makes it a felony to be prosecuted under state law.
I make a motion that council consider and pass ordinance 2018 dash four, an ordinance to combat discrimination for the guarantee of equality and inclusion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the council adopt ordinance 2018 dash four, which is an ordinance to combat discrimination and for the guarantee of equality and inclusion. Are there any questions, comments, or dissent?
I'll make one comment. I've been a member of HEW Committee, and I certainly thank and applaud the Chair, Natalie Wolf, that has helped guide us and steer us here. There are a lot of different opinions expressed during our open committee meetings. And I always viewed this, and I believe the committee always viewed this, as a journey, where we started from and where we are today. And we also recognize this journey is not over. To be very clear, this journey is not over. There's more to learn, and we've certainly heard residents speak this evening, as well as all our, at all our committee meetings, in terms of how they feel. I've certainly learned a lot, and I think I felt some of the pain of discrimination that people have expressed both here and at prior meetings. I'm a child of Holocaust survivors. I give talks at many schools in our area to talk about what discrimination is, the consequences of discrimination. So I hear you, and I feel for you. And so, all I want to share is that, again, this is, I would call, our first legal step on this journey. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
I'm not a member of the HEW Committee, but I did attend a number of the meetings. I just want to comment as a, kind of from a general perspective as a local official. I really appreciate the passion and energy and power of everyone's remarks. In many instances, I'm on that side of the desk, speaking aggressively and passionately about similar causes. I could easily be in the audience if I were not behind this desk. And being behind this desk is very different. I feel that the role of a local official is kind of sacred trust, to steward the village's resources, and to listen to all constituents. And in the HEW meetings, as it became clear, as the sort of divide began to occur and become evident, it was and is very painful to witness. I have, I've been on council for about 10 years, and it has always been rather immune to the divisiveness and polarization that we have experienced at the national level. And it was, it is extremely painful to me to witness those divides coming into this chamber in such a way. I feel obligated to be what has been stated as a minority view. I feel obligated to listen to that and to try to incorporate, to find ways to incorporate that in a way that is respectful of all. And I would echo Ray Warren that we are still on that journey around the issue of LGBT inclusion. I do not consider this ordinance an endpoint, but I think it is an important step. And I'm really hoping that the Human Rights Commission will be able to produce some healing and some bringing together. I'm always very moved to hear the different viewpoints of people from the different points of view or camp, I hate to use those words, but words are limiting. So that's really where I'm coming from. I regularly call my elected officials at this federal level, and they regularly don't listen to me because I don't fit in the box that they consider their supporter. And I'm just not willing to turn around and do that to people here in Amberly. I really want this to be a place where people listen to each other and grow together and come together. And I really hope that the Human Rights Commission can do that. And I'm really thankful that we have beefed up some of the hate crime and the housing provisions that we are able to do. I think that religious freedom is a very, becoming an unfortunately murky issue in this country right now. And in time, maybe we'll have, we will hopefully have greater clarity that will be helpful to us.
So I want to echo some of what my colleague said, but first and most importantly, I just want to thank you all for being here. Thank you all for writing us letters, for reaching out via email, for coming to our meetings. This is, I think, really what democracy is about, what our community is about, is coming together. And frankly, the things that you've said already give me great hope and fill my heart with what a loving and tolerant community it is, based on the things that you've said today and otherwise, and that we've been hearing about all of the stories you've been telling. And so, I agree. I think, you know, I understand that 20 is not as good as 100, but it's certainly, I agree, it would, I support this step with such, you know, with great strength and a hope that 20 becomes 40 and becomes so forth. And frankly, I also genuinely, going back to our resolution, hope that this is, in some ways, the piece about the legal protection is irrelevant soon in our country. Because the national law, I mean, I'm an optimist about that. In the meantime, the commission, I am also extremely optimistic, and I really feel strongly about when the Vice Mayor first sort of introduced the concept of the commission, that this would be an incredible opportunity to get citizens involved, to get citizens together, to bring people together, to learn from each other. I mean, the diversity of our community is not limited to what's in this room. Our community is incredibly diverse, and we have a lot of opportunities to come together and learn from each other, to be, you know, constantly becoming a more inclusive and tolerant community, and to celebrate those, that difference and that diversity, and to do so arm-in-arm. And we're always, it's always good to have more opportunities for us to gather as residents. So, most importantly in that, just thank you. Thank you all for coming and for your passion and your stories that I know are extremely personal, and you're inspiring us every day as well. Thank you.
Although this ordinance may not be up to everybody's expectations, it's just prudent to get this thing moving forward and adopt this particular issue. As another first-generation American, who sits on this council, my parents also came from Germany. I learned to be very open-minded, considerate, respectful, and this has been part of my upbringing. I have been told to be tolerant, to be forgiving, never forget.
I would just like to make a couple of comments. First of all, in no way, in my mind, that what we are ending up with is a watered-down or something that we've done to cave in to others. That is not why I ended up where I am. The first time I saw the ordinance that was written before the one that is right now, my first comment was, "This does not feel like Amberly Village." And it wasn't. This was patterned after an ordinance from a bunch of other places. Amberly Village, I believe, is a place around being tolerant and changing behaviors and things like that. That is, you know, we are a diverse community, and I think we are generally a very, very tolerant community. And I think it is all about changing behavior. And I, in my mind, I first started thinking about the Human Rights Commission, and I've, for the last, I think now, five years or six years on council, I've been the council rep on the Environmental Stewardship Committee. And the Environmental Stewardship Committee is dealing with a different type of issue than the Human Rights Commission is. But it equally has people who feel very strongly about some environmental issues. And there are places in the United States that mandate that you must recycle, and you must have, you know, you must use, you know, other environmental things. But that's not what the ESC has elected to do. What they have constantly said is, "We need to educate people, show why this is the way it should be, and change behavior." And I think they've started to get there. It's been in existence now 12 years, and we are now close to the highest recycling community in Hamilton County. And we were, just five years ago, we were down around 10. So changing behaviors can happen. And I really do think the Human Rights Commission will identify areas where we can change things further, but even more so, will ensure that we are a tolerant community. And I'm sure we do have shortfalls now, and we need to identify those. Those aren't probably just the LGBT community. We have other shortfalls that I think the Human Rights Commission needs to identify and educate people on, and maybe make changes in law, but we need to do things carefully. We are, Amberly, we're a small community. And where we have to, you know, as a council, where we are required to put most of our resources on protecting our citizens by employing a police force, by maintaining our streets, et cetera. The reason why I believe it was appropriate to encourage the state to take action is because this is where this type of thing primarily belongs. The state has been, the state and the feds have been deficient. We all know that. But that's not to say, just because they've been deficient, we can take it over. Because we are, in my opinion, very resource-constrained. We don't have the infrastructure in terms of attorneys and things like that to enforce anything real restrictive. It would put, it could put an undue burden on our resources. So, you know, I really do believe that we're ending up at a great place for a beginning, and it is a beginning. I think the Human Rights Commission, I think some comments were made that said it didn't have the backing of the council. I assure you that the Human Rights Commission will have 100% backing of this council if we pass this, and definitely will have 100% backing of myself. We will be involved, and, you know, one of the questions that we as council will need to be asking of any Human Rights Commission is, what, you know, and we need to ask them quite often, "Have you identified areas where we do need to change laws and things like that?" So this is an important thing, and not something that we're taking lightly or watering down or anything like that.
So first, I want to thank every resident who has been following this issue since last year. A year ago, council passed a resolution committing to nondiscrimination and recognizing the benefits of diversity. The resolution was actually named Committing to Nondiscrimination. And we committed in the resolution to a review and update to all of our laws, policies, and procedures to ensure that all were in accordance with the principles of that resolution. That's straight from the resolution. I'm not, I can't just talk from the top of my head and be coherent. Two months ago, council unanimously passed a resolution in support of the Ohio Fairness Act, which would update all Ohio laws to include sexual orientation and gender identity as protected classes in Ohio's nondiscrimination laws. Ravikh Pauran, she left, but she mentioned that currently 19 municipalities in Ohio have passed nondiscrimination laws that are inclusive. And tonight, the city of South Duplitt will be voting on one as well. The ordinance that we have before us, it does some good things. It creates a Human Rights Commission. It adds sexual identity and gender expression to classes of people who cannot be discriminated against in housing. And it requires Amberly to give consideration to whether contractors we work with have nondiscrimination policies in place. And I consider those good things. However, it does not fulfill even the stated intent of the ordinance itself, which is to safeguard the rights of all who live in and visit the village. And I read the ordinance specifically to the where, last whereas, and the intent to emphasize that. In my opinion, this ordinance that we're preparing to vote on is not complete and will not be complete until it ensures protections in employment, public accommodations, commerce, and education. The Health, Education, and Welfare Committee had not even begun to discuss reasonable exemptions to the ordinance that would be satisfactory to our residents. We had not even had a legal opinion on whether a nondiscrimination ordinance was constitutional. There was no discussion about whether the village had adequate insurance coverage in the event of a fear lawsuit. These are all issues that should have been discussed in the committee, or at least here, publicly by council, if these whispered concerns were actual concerns, so that actual answers could be given. I have heard that because discrimination is not a problem in Amberly Village, why should we have a law preventing it? Since the beginning of 2018, and remember, it's only the beginning of April, anti-transgender bills have been introduced in Iowa, Kentucky, Missouri, Oklahoma, South Dakota, and Tennessee. Bills have been introduced in several states that would allow discrimination against gay and lesbian individuals at health centers and adoption agencies and by insurance companies. In Ohio, the Department of Health is refusing requests for updated birth certificates indicating gender change, even when presented with a court order to do so. And recently, and publicly, the President of the United States has barred transgender troops from the military. While we here on council do not have firsthand knowledge of discrimination, be assured that discrimination is real, whether it happens within the invisible lines of Amberly Village or elsewhere. Discrimination is not limited to LGBT community. The Cincinnati Enquirer has run two articles recently, which should be alternatively titled Nazis Among Us, detailing the rise of white supremacy in Ohio. Amberly is diverse, and ordinance providing protections to those who live and work here is not divisive. It is not the antithesis of what Amberly is. It is what Amberly is. I promise that the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee will continue to meet until we can present council with a nondiscrimination ordinance that protects all of our residents. I have heard from most council members at this table that they want to continue, that this is just the beginning. And as Chair of that committee, I assure you that this ordinance passes. It's just the beginning of council's. Thank you.
Vice Mayor and Chairwoman. I am nonplussed by your statements that these questions were not raised. You're the Chair of the committee, why did you bring it to council if you didn't feel it was ready?
They voted to bring it to council unanimously. It was unanimous. They said it was unanimous.
I assumed that the committee had conducted the vetting that it felt was necessary, and, I mean, I brought up, and there was one meeting where you said you weren't going to listen to those concerns about liability. You said, "We're not going to get into those petty concerns."
Actually, I didn't say that.
You said petty concerns. You said petty concerns.
Actually, hey, you brought up that we were not covered by our insurance. And I said, "Did you ask that? Where did you ask that question? Because it was never asked in this committee."
And that was the meeting where you said, you had prefaced the meeting, the room was full, and you prefaced the meeting by saying, "We're not going to get into the petty concerns." Petty, or you would, and I said, "Are you allowed to do that?" And you said, "Yes." So I assumed you had addressed it, you were not concerned.
No, we have not been, none of those questions have been addressed, and many of them have been raised outside of the committee since such time, as this ordinance has already been before council. But in any of the readings, nobody has spoken other than myself. No one has raised a question. No one has said we will be subject to liability. No one has asked the question until I asked this one. This week, I asked Kevin, what would our exposure be? And only then did I find out our insurance limits and whether we are perhaps underinsured. But this ordinance, the ordinance as it stands now, because those questions don't matter.
I came to the meeting, the meeting in the community room that was subsequent to the one where I felt the debate was shut down, other than the issues that you had before you. You said, I heard you say, or I understood, that you had concluded with Kevin that there was no religious exemption that would be acceptable, and so therefore, you brought forth this different ordinance. I was taking direction from the committee. If you felt those issues needed to be brought, I mean, that's where I'm coming from.
That's like, I mean, if you wanted this to be said, that's why I said... Yes, and the meeting that you're at is the meeting that I had hoped that we would be able to discuss religious exemptions, but we did not even get to discuss it. We had a time limit of two council members. Actually, I was supposed to leave also, and I didn't go to the meeting. But the committee had time constraints. We heard from everybody in the room. We never got to discuss what would be appropriate religious exemptions, because we spent the duration of the meeting coming up with a multitude of hypothetical situations of whether they would be exempt. Would a cupcake be exempt? Would wigs be exempt? Would lawn mowing be exempt? How many apply? We never even got to the nitty-gritty of the ordinance. So we came up with an entirely different ordinance. Everyone seems to like it, but we never answered any of the legal questions, any of the questions that satisfy people that a tough ordinance would be the one way to go.
Anything else? I mean, I think this does again highlight that it is, this is a very complex, evolving area of the law. And again, for me personally, that is a reason to be, you know, take your time and get it right. And I think that's, again, another reason why, you know, the Human Rights Commission, and then, you know, committing to reviewing and changing things later as things evolve, to me, makes a lot of sense.
What about tabling the motion and going back to committee?
The only thing I would say with respect to tabling, generally, when you table something, you can't table something indefinitely. You should table something for a specific period of time. It would be inappropriate to table something for a shorter period of time. To me, and again, this is my personal opinion, to me, you know, in passing the ordinance, you're not saying, you know, that in another six months' time, if you found that you, the Human Rights Commission is now working, and they make a recommendation to do X, and we want to do something, we could do it.
Well, as we're on council, I don't think we have to rely on the Human Rights Commission directing us to go back and bring another ordinance forward. I mean, in fact, there is a number of ordinance in the wings.
I mean, at this point, we do have a motion and a second on the table. The motion and the second was to approve ordinance 2018-4. So before, you know, if someone were to make a motion now to table it, we could take up that motion, but at this point, we only have the motion on the table to approve. Is there any other to say? Okay, if not, it has been moved in second, and then we adopt resolute, or ordinance 2018-4. Please call the rule.
Rich Farada? Peggy Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattonbach?
Yes.
Billy Kamein?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wood?
Yes.
Okay, the ordinance 2018-4 passes unanimously. We'll now move on to the managers.
I'd like to highlight three items from the Village Manager's report. The first item being that we are in tax season, so we have extended tax office hours. This week, we will be open at extended hours, so until 5:00 p.m., so residents can receive customer service through the admin window. On the Saturday and Sunday, the hours will be open as well. On Saturday, April 14th, we'll be open from 9:00 until noon, and then Sunday from 10:00 until 1:00 p.m. And then next Monday, which is the 16th of April, and then Tuesday, April 17th, the tax office will have extended hours as well, an additional hour, so we'll open until 5:00 p.m. The second item I wanted to mention is in regards to the spring newsletter, the print newsletter we do twice a year. And so residents will begin receiving the spring print newsletter this particular week in their mailbox. And that includes articles on quite a few items about business of the village. And the third item I wanted to mention is that we have been notified by Greater Cincinnati Waterworks that they intend to replace water lines in a particular area of the village. Primarily, it's going to be on Arborcrest Drive, Arborcrest Court, Long Meadow Lane, and North and South White Tree Circle, and then Lamarck from Long Meadow to White Tree. So the village will need to purchase hydrants. We had budgeted for that in 2018, but whenever this project is completed, that will dictate our resurfacing program for future years. As you know, in the past, we have made arrangements with Greater Cincinnati Waterworks to come in and resurface those streets after the water lines have been replaced. So I'm bringing that to your attention, just because we will have the hydrant issue that will be coming forth, and then also will affect our future resurfacing, depending on when the project is completed. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions to the manager? Now we'll move on to Chief's report. Relates to the chief's report, and is pointed out by the Chair of the Police and Fire Committee, it is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. So this is specifically a week for our dispatchers and things like that. We tended, in the past, we've recognized Police Officers Week and Maintenance Workers Week, but as the Chair of the Police and Fire Committee pointed out, these people are equally important to us, and I noticed that you did put something out on Nextdoor or something. So that's great that we're recognizing the important work that they also do. Just a couple of things with respect to the Environmental Stewardship Committee. First of all, I want to very much thank Kathy Kramer and Pete Duffy for chairing, again this year, the One Stop Drop. The One Stop Drop was held yesterday. We do not have the final tonnage numbers at this point, but all numbers point to a record-setting event from the standpoint of tonnage. It was definitely a record-setting event as far as the number of people that went through. Chief, your entire team did a great job helping us out. Maintenance guys did a great job putting the equipment up there that we needed. It really, and your layout that we worked on last year, I think, really worked very well. So, you know, we were able to handle the record number of cars, and, you know, there was, in the first half hour, there was a short period where we had a little bit of traffic backing out onto Ridge, but overall, it was tremendous success, tremendous success. Just from the numbers I can give, paper, we know that there was 22,000 pounds of shredded paper, it's now shredded, it came in as not shredded. And that was 22,000 versus 15,000 last year, so much higher. Goodwill was an excellent addition this year, both in terms of giving something to our residents, but just on pounds collected, there was 9,000 pounds collected by the two Goodwill trucks. They initially came in with one truck, they had to call in for another. So I think, again, that was, the thought of having Goodwill was something that Pete Duffy and Kathy Kramer came up with. So again, kudos to them. I really do thank them for their leadership on that event. Just a couple events further in April that the Environmental Stewardship Committee will be supporting. The Arbor Day and Earth Day celebration will be April 26th at 6:00. We will have a reading of proclamation, a discussion of Earth Day, and we will have a tree planting demonstration, as we have done in the past. Then also on April 28th, which is Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, we are, there's a Green Up Day at French Park. We will be working with the Cincinnati Parks people. It will mainly be focused on the area right at Section In Ridge. We'll be thinning out some honeysuckle and things like that, so give people a much clearer picture into the park. You will actually be able to see, there's a creek right there at Section In Ridge that you currently cannot see. It might even give, I think it was five years ago, that a bridge was installed to extend the walking path, and that bridge was actually constructed by a contingent of Israeli scouts, as well as part of the mayor's green leaf program. And so you will probably be able to see that bridge once it's cleared out. We're looking for volunteers to help with that event. You can go on the Amberly website to get details, and I think they're asking, to just give some indication about a week and a half in advance, so that we know numbers. What will be there is, the Cincinnati Parks crew will be using chainsaws. Volunteers will not be using chainsaws. Volunteers may be using some hand saws, but they will mainly be dragging the cuttings up to a chipper, which the chipper will again be manned by Cincinnati Parks crew, and it will not be volunteers sticking things into the chipper. And for volunteers that come, the main thing to bring are gloves and water. Any tools you will need will be provided by Cincinnati Parks. And then the last thing I want to mention, our next meeting is May 21st of the Environmental Stewardship Committee at 7:00. And that concludes my report on the Environmental Stewardship Committee and concludes my mayor's report. Any questions? Any new business?
Well, yes. Mayor, I wonder if you have given any consideration to signing on to the mayor's illegal guns. As you know, we have residents in our village who are the aunt and uncle of 14-year-old Jamie Guttenberg from Parkland, Florida, who was murdered in February. And in fact, they were going to come here and ask themselves, but Red Guttenberg is in town tonight as the community agent.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I mean, I think the, it's not against the legal gun, I think it's also for gun control. Well, I personally am very much in favor of appropriate gun control measures and definitely illegal guns, so I have no problem signing. To me, it's a no-brainer. It's a no-brainer. Any other new business? If not, we can consider the meeting adjourned.